Stand for the pledge allegiance.
States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we can give our students a big hand, I apologize. Okay, I would like to take this time to welcome everyone that is present and also that are viewing for our board meeting. If I can have an adoption of the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, none opposed. And I'm now going to turn it over to Dr. Buck for superintendent report.
So next item is 2.01 Superintendent's Report. Thank you everybody for coming here. Thank you Board of Education for everything you do. Have a long list of brags because fall seasons are wrapping up. So congratulations to Lee Summit West girls volleyball team who took third place in state. Lee Summit North girls tennis team took fourth place in state. They're also the number one public school. The other three teams are private, so I think they're the public school state champs. Lee Summit High School boys cross country team took sixth place at state. It's been several years since they got to go, so kudos for the team placing so high. Then I have the state's swimming championships for this weekend. Lee Summit High took eighth, West took thirteenth, and North took fifteenth. Then these are all following or all state honors that we know of now. There are still some of the fall sports that will do their all states. And I'm gonna say their first names because there are so many of them, so I can get through it. So Hunter at LSHS received all state honors for cross country. LSHS boys swim two hundred medley relay of Quinn, Noah, Nathan, and Drew are also all state. Lee Summit North boys two hundred medley relay Blake, Xavier, Luke, and Graham are all state. Lee Summit High School boys swim fifty free, Noah is all state. Lee Summit North boys swim fifty free, Graham is all state. Lee Summit West hundred fly, Jack is all state. Lee Summit High School one hundred fly, Nathan's all state. Lee Summit West two hundred free relay, Jack, Caden, Max, Dallas are all state. Lee Summit North hundred backstroke, Graham is all state. High School hundred meter, Lee Summit High School hundred meter breaststroke is Noah, all state. Lee Summit High School four hundred free relay, Quinn, Noah, Nathan, and Drew were all state. And then going to softball, Lee Summit West has three all state athletes Bailey, Addie, and Callie. And then Lee Summit West volleyball has two all state athletes, and it's Ava and Emily. So kudos to all those athletes and for all of our student athletes who represented Lee Summit so well throughout the fall. So thank you to them. I'm also proud to share that Pleasantly Middle School and East Trails Middle School cross country runners, they often do, every year do this lapathon. And this year they raised over eighteen thousand dollars in their lapathon and donated it all to ProDio Youth. And ProDio Youth is ecstatic about that. So thank you to all those young boys and girls who raised those funds and ran all those laps. Congratulations Lee Summit High School Intro to Broadcast students who earned some of the hardware at Four State Academy's Classic Broadcasting Competition. So Brayden Bree, Tristan Mason, Kaylee, Tristan Mason, Kaylee, and Landon. Congratulations on your efforts. There are twenty-five school districts from around the country that competed in that. And then congratulations Lee Summit North's football coach, Jamar, Jamar Mozy, who was named the 2023-24 NAIA Coach of Character, and it's so well earned. So congratulations, Coach Mo. The Board of Education, just to let you know, and I'm sure you're gonna hear it, they're gonna have their second World Cafe event dinner with the board, making sure we put the word dinner in there, on December 11th in the evening at East Trails Middle School. I think it starts at six o'clock, I think is when it starts. And then tonight, I'm also thrilled, one last thing to honor. We're in education, we're about growth and learning. That means our board members also engage in growth and learning. And so it's always kind of fun to congratulate one of them when they earn a distinction. So today I get to give the distinction to President Sparks, who earned his Masters in Board Member Certification. So he gets a certificate from the state as well as a handy little pen. So congratulations to President Sparks. That brings us to Agenda Item 3.01, School Spotlight from Lee Summit Elementary.
Thank you for having us. I'm Tracy Sanders, the principal from Lee Summit Elementary. Before we have our spotlight with our robotics team, we have someone we want to recognize. And so we have been so fortunate to be asked to recognize a volunteer of the year from Lee Summit Elementary. This is a total surprise. Val Salazar, would you come on up here? Look at her, she's back there. Her husband's totally in on this. She thinks she's here to help support our robotics team. So Val, Val has been with us only for a couple of years at LSE. They moved here. And Val got involved in our school and has been huge. So Val has been volunteering in our school for a couple of years. Last year she just stepped in, and she decided to get involved as vice president of our PTA. And LSE has a very tiny PTA. And so if you get involved, you wear lots of hats. And this year, Val said, I'll do it, I'll be the president. And so Val has been instrumental in helping organize events for students and teachers and kids. She helped raise funds so that every single classroom had indoor riot set kits, the whole entire building. Every classroom has their own indoor riot set kit because of Val. Every single student has parties that are fun and interactive because of Val. She has helped us totally reinvent every event that we have. It's organized, it's planned out, everyone looks forward to them. We've always had a huge multicultural festival at LSE, and this year we decided, let's do something different. So we had Hispanic Heritage Week, and this lady right here and her husband, they made tamales that we sold, over six hundred of them that they handmade in their kitchen. And we sold out. So Val Salazar, you're a volunteer of the year, and it was nearly unanimous vote. So this is for Val. Gustavo, thank you for helping us surprise her. We love you at LSE.
Val, if you could stay up here, the Board of Education, come up, and we'd like to get a picture with you at the Board of Education. Ms. Bergen's gonna come up and take your picture. Ms. Sanders, you can get in there as well.
Next year when we have our tamale sale, you all have to come because they're fabulous. All right, now it's for our student spotlight. So I'm gonna talk a little bit about them while the board is getting seated again. LSE has had a robotics team just for a few years, and we just decided we were going to start it. And we did that, and it was hard. So we had a couple of teachers that said, Ms. Sanders, I think we can do this. We had no training, we did it all on our own. Lee Summit High School was instrumental in coming to help us do that. They came and helped a couple of our teachers learn how to do that. But guess what? Those teachers retired. So what are you gonna do? Well, you reach out to some other teachers that said, we're gonna do it. So Mrs. Rocos, she's one of our first grade teachers, and Ms. Williams, she's one of our third grade teachers, they just said, we can do this. And so here they are. They came and they decided to help us. Well, at LSE, one of the things that we sometimes struggle with is transportation for some of our kids. But we have an amazing robotics team, and their parents are awesome. These guys stay until 5:30, two nights a week, so that they can learn robotics. I know, that's pretty awesome. Because it's dark at 5:30, and so we sometimes arrange transportation, but we make that work. And they're gonna tell you all about the tenants of robotics, because it's not just about learning how to code, but it's also about learning how to work as a team. So they're here to tell you all about robotics. They're gonna introduce themselves before they tell you, though.
Hello, I am Alasia. We are the Cougar, we are the Cougarbots from LSE. And this is.
I am Leanne.
Lynette.
Colton.
Violet.
Angelina.
Winkin.
Carter.
Sage.
The FLL Robotics Program has three parts, the robot game, core values, and project.
In the robot game, we build, we build and program our robot to complete missions. We try to come, we try to earn as many points as we can in two and a half minutes.
As part of robotics.
As part of robotics, we are judged on our core values. Our values are discover, we explore new ideas and skills, innovation, we have creativity and grit to solve problems, impact, we apply our learning to help the world, inclusion, we respect each other, teamwork, we are stronger together, fun, fun. We enjoy and celebrate what we do.
Our project is working to innovate the way the arts are combined with science and spread around the world. On December 16th, we will be judged on these areas and compete at Penn Valley Community College against thirty-nine teams from across the area. To get ready, we meet after school twice a week for a total of three hours. Thank you so much.
Good job, guys. Thanks for coming.
Come on, let's give these kids another big hand.
Our next agenda item is 3.02, School Spotlight, Lee Summit West High School. We have Dr. Maed here.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kayla Maed. I'm the principal of Lee Summit West High School, and I can't thank the board enough for allowing me to do this, because I'm recognizing someone that means a lot to Titan Nation, for not only us as a staff, but our students and our parents. So Kyle Too Good, if you could come on up here, please. I have been a Titan for eight years, and for eight years, I've always seen this man with a very large camera at most events, whether that be a football game, any choir, theater. And Mr. Too Good does this out of the kindness of his own heart and takes, I don't know, how many pictures every Friday night? Three thousand, three thousand, and then posts it to his Facebook page for all parents and all students to see. He gives up a lot of his time, a lot of his energy to everybody at Titan Nation, and we just can't thank him enough for years upon years of just creating memories. When we think about like what pictures do, yes, we create our own memories in terms of just what we remember, but when we go back and look at photos, it just brings back all of the great things that our kids have done, and really just all of our wonderful students. So Kyle, I can't thank you enough. So Kyle Too Good is our volunteer of the year at Lee Summit West. You don't get to take this picture. Katie's gonna take it. No, 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 no. He's, yeah. I don't need the mic to commentate this. Give a moment for our stars to come in. It's a great day to be a Titan, and we get to recognize this many special people in our Titan family. So tonight, Lee Summit West would like to spotlight our PIE program, which is our peer-inclusive environment class that we have at Lee Summit West. I'd like to hand the mic over to our teachers, Tracy Titus and Emily Mincher, so they can talk about this program and also highlight some of the amazing students. These are not all of the students here at Lee Summit West, but some of our amazing students at Lee Summit West.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Tracy Titus, Emily Mincher. We're both life skills teachers at Lee Summit West. We have the PIE program, it's peer-inclusive environment. We have around forty students this semester. They come in every hour. We have around five to seven students per hour, and they help with all different types of activities with our life skills students. And I'm just gonna let them introduce themselves and tell a little bit about what they do.
Hello, everybody. My name is Quincy Torre. I'm a senior at Lee Summit West, and I help the kids wash and deliver the basketball jerseys for Coach Shee.
Hi, I'm Michaela Myers, and I'm a senior here at Lee Summit West. And I've helped the kids develop their like cooking skills. And one fond memory is that we've made puppy chow together.
Hi, my name is Josie Muchmore. I'm a senior. I've been in the program for three years. And what I've done mostly is coffee cart, and that helps them with their money management and making change.
Hi, my name's Emily Fitz, and I love the PIE program. It means so much to me, so much.
Hi, my name's Laura Mayo, and I help the kids with their typing skills.
Hi, my name is Kate. What I like about the PIE program is how kind and nice they are. I like how, I like making new friends, and I like how they help me learn.
My name is Nolan Nash, and most of my time in the Life Skills Program is spent with Kate. I've been in the Life Skills Program for three years now. My dad is a teacher in the Life Skills Room. And normally me and Kate, at the end of the day, will go through and go through comprehension and remembering what she did every hour of the day.
My name's Ashton Norman, and I like how they help me with my work, and they help like white, like write stuff on whiteboards for me.
Oh, my name's Wyatt Brett, and I like this salad. I like, my friend is healthy and sweet and nice.
Hello, this is Mason Gray, and I'm Drew Dickerson, and I kinda just, I kinda hang around with him and just kinda help him throughout the day and help him get to his classes. And just, I'm kind of just his buddy, just hang around with him.
Yeah, it's really impacted my whole life. I think this is something I, I mean, I'm going to college for it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go and try and go as far as I can with this and, I don't know, help, I like helping out with this. So it's changed my whole future, this class.
Laura. It's cold.
Um, the PIE program has helped me grow relationships and bonds with not only the students, but also the teachers. And I've also learned to, what is it called? I don't know, learn to like accept all different types of people, so.
Okay, well, it's impacted me a lot in these three years. The teachers, the students, everyone is just so amazing. I've made so many friends in this program, and it's really helped with just like leadership skills and just being like working with everyone and just, yeah, it's amazing. The teachers are amazing, the students are amazing.
As you can tell, this is something that we are, we are very proud of and excited to have here at Lee Summit West. Just the impact that it makes on our school culture, and to know that no matter who you are, what classes that you take, you're a part of what we do at Lee Summit West, and you are very special to us. So thank you all for being here and showcasing this.
All right, let's give these kids a hand. That was incredible. Thank you, guys, for coming. 3.03 is our next agenda item, and I'm turning that one over. That's the Belcher Scholarship, and I'm gonna turn it over to President Sparks. All right, at this time, if Mr. Richard Lyons would come up front. All right, so while Mr. Lyons is coming, the MSBA, they have the Belcher Scholarship Award, and so we are part of Region Four. And so he is the one that has been selected by the Board of Education to represent LSR VII, and he will go on to compete for a thousand dollar scholarship. And then he can also compete for an additional fifteen hundred dollar scholarship. And so at this time, if the board will come down for a pitcher, and as we recognize Mr. Richard Lyons as being our choice. And Mr. Lyons, he is actually a high school student, a senior at Lee Summit West. And so the Titans, they did a wonderful job of having the scholars to apply for that scholarship.
All right, next agenda item is 4.01, Finance Committee Report. Hearing no discussion, moving on to 4.02, Board Reports or Meetings Attended by Board Members.
Okay, we're gonna start with Board Member Aslick.
Always start with me.
I have no one else on my left.
Fair point. Okay, well, mine's pretty brief, because it was a busy work month. So I attended the fourth CSIP meeting, which was actually my first. It was the fourth of the CSIP's meetings, but it was my first, because Board Member Murdock is usually our rep, and he was out of town. So I covered that. And it was, it was actually really great, because it was my first meeting ever of a CSIP where they're actually developing the CSIP. The team worked well, really well together. It was very well attended by our community members, parents, and staff. So really appreciate all of the participation that that group has garnered. They're doing really good work. I called into our Board Policy Committee meeting. I couldn't be there in person, but Dr. Carlson is gracious enough to set up remote calling in for us, our board members, when we can't be present. So that was a good committee meeting, and we reviewed the finance policy section of our board policies. And Mr. Holder did a great job of running us through some of those and making necessary changes, recommendations that the board will likely be seeing. I was part of the Belcher Scholarship Committee Selection Process, and couldn't make the meeting, but did review all of those applications. And it was really nice to see all the student participation from Lee Summit West. So we had a lot of very qualified applicants, so it was definitely a tough decision. And I attended the MSBA conference with the rest of the board here, and I'm sure everyone will probably talk about that. So I will conclude my comments. Thanks.
Okay, Board Member Miller.
Okay, so I decided I'm doing something a little different. And if you know me, you know I love taking pictures. All of my fellow board members know that. So I decided to, just like Dr. Maed said, pictures kind of remind you of all the amazing things that are happening. So here is some, here are some of my adventures for the month. The first one, the first two that you're gonna see here, I shadowed Nutrition Services at PLMS. And it was so much fun seeing all of just everybody's hard work. Jen and her team, they just do an amazing job, just making sure the students have a variety of things to eat, a lot of farm, all the farm-to-table stuff that they have, which is really cool, the offerings that they have, way better than when I was in school. These school lunches are way better. So I was able to serve the kiddos and actually saw my daughter there, which she decided she didn't wanna, want to see me there. She was embarrassed, but we got a, we got a picture there. But, and then Donna, I mean, one of, some of the amazing things that they do is they take things like, like it's apple season. So they had Ms. Donna, she made apple butter, so all of the kids got to taste fresh homemade apple butter. I mean, that's amazing. So anyway, some of the, look at, look at the offerings that they have in the, that you can pick from, not just the hot lunches with the cold stuff. So anyway, I was really impressed by that. It was so much fun shadowing Nutrition Services. And if you really think about Nutrition Services, just a plug for them, they are the only, I think, they are the only staff in the school that sees, that sees every student every single day. And if I'm not right, somebody tell me I'm not, but I think that's true. So it's pretty amazing. They, they get to impact every single student every single day. So that was PLMS. And then the next two are MSBA, and we had so much fun at MSBA. I actually got to be a delegate, an alternate delegate with Jennifer. And so that was a great experience. And one of the best parts was we had our students represented there. So we had Ms. Taylor Kenny and Ms. Harper Nana Maker, and they were showcasing our birdhouses. And so it was so fun. They came and they stayed the whole day talking to thousands of people from across Missouri about the birdhouse projects that we were doing here in Lee Summit. So that was pretty cool. The next one was, I just wanted to share more about MSBA on the next slide. And we had some of our very own staff presenting at MSB as well. So a nod to Dr. Shelton. It was amazing. He presented about all of the safety and the connections that we have with our PD and with the fire department. They presented together, and so that was pretty amazing. Dr. Carlson, I think, also presented. I didn't get to go to his session, but it's just a great, MSBA is a great time for us to connect with each other as a board, but also learn what's going on around the country and also connect with other school districts. And when I tell you, people come up to you, when they know you're from Lee Summit, they come up and they wanna know what we're doing and how we're doing it. And they, they, you know, they heard about the community conversation that we had, and they wanted to know how we did that and what that looked like. And so just know that the name of Lee Summit School District in the community is one that's held in high esteem. They know that we're doing some awesome stuff here. So that was great, MSBA Conference. The next one, I was invited by our library services staff to come to be a judge at the Chili Cookoff at Lee Summit North High School. And so this is a big deal, guys. Like, these teachers, I mean, this staff, this is a big deal to be a part of the Chili Cookoff. And so to be judges, it was pretty, pretty fun. So me and Amy Taylor, who is, who's the one invited me, we tasted everybody's chili, we tasted everybody's soup, all the desserts, and we got to choose the winner. So that was pretty amazing. The next slide after that is just also sharing that the, the library staff shared a presentation about AI and how it's going to be changing education in the future. So, pretty good there. The next one, let's see. Matt Sessler hosted the LSR VII Special Services Resource Fair, and that was a huge success. It was so great to see all the resources that are It was so great to see all the resources that are available and that we can support our students with, not just when they're here at LSR Seven, but as they launch into, into their life after LSR Seven. So that was great. This week, I actually also got to participate in the Student, the Lee Summit Teacher Academy Fifth Annual Conference. And so that was so much fun. Our Teacher of the Year spoke. The students from middle school and high school that are in the program got to actually go to different sessions, and that included things like special education, OT, therapeutic services in the, in the school, and just really learn about what does it really mean to be an educator, and what are all the various ways in which I can support students if I am a teacher. And Dr. Carlson actually did a session that was really good. Just a lot of fun, and, and so much fun to see our students being, having the opportunity to have real-world learning opportunities while they're here in our district, and, and just learn about what the possibilities might be. So, really great, so much fun. So, let's see, the next one, so there's another, sorry, I, I'm not controlling my slides. Thank you. So there's another one for, for LSTA. And then the next one, I went on a tour to Hilltop, and let me tell you, what they're doing at Hilltop is, guess what? Amazing. Mr. Montgomery and his staff, they are special people. And, and what they're doing, and, and you could just tell that the difference that they're making and the students that they're touching. And we also got to take a picture and meet our Support Professional of the Year. So that was fun there at Hilltop. And then CAC Meeting was last night. It was a wonderful showing of our community coming out and coming together to talk about early education and pre-K. And so we had some great discussions led by Ms. Shelley Sanders, so thank you for, for leading our discussions last night. And then, last but not least, today I went to, I went to Highland Park. Oh, thank you for changing that, because I'm reading it online, it's different. Okay, Highland Park. And they, and, and I worked with the library, oops, sorry, the Library Services, and they had, they brought in an author. And the author actually went to several different elementary schools and basically talked to the, talked to all the students about what does it mean to be an author, and what is the process it takes to be an author. And I just really loved the message that she gave, because it was about not giving up, and you might get told no in your life, and, but just the perseverance that, that it takes. So, just so many great things happening in the LSR Seven, and there's just some pictures to go along with it. So thank you for bearing with me in this first round. I'll get faster next time, I promise.
All right, thank you. Board Member Murdock?
Well, first off, that's impossible to go after. So, just a couple of quick things. Number one, it was very disappointing not to get to go to Hilltop yesterday. I was really looking forward to that, so I blame my son who broke his wrist, and so, so I'm just gonna add to his guilt on that one. So, had to miss out on that. Did attend MSBA with all of the other Board members. Lots and lots of good sessions that happened throughout it, though I also will say that one of the few perks is we get to actually sit down and have dinner together in the evenings. And so the Saturday night dinner, just getting to be with the Board members and talk about whatever we felt like talking about, rather than, it always happened to be business-oriented, it is always a good time. So I appreciated that a lot. And then lastly, attended quite a few of the sporting events throughout the district. Won't go through them all. Some turned out better than others. So, that's it for me.
Vice President Foley?
All right, so this month I attended the Government Relations Meeting. I attended the MSBA Conference, along with the other Board members. I did wanna share just something cool that I experienced, was a school district partnered with their local Chamber of Commerce to have volunteers shadow with a principal for a day at all of their schools. So they talked about how the Principal for a Day Program really built community connections and support for the district. It's a large district, so they had fifty-two schools, and they had fifty-two participants. So that's just something to kinda consider for the future. That's kind of a fun idea to build some community engagement. I attended the Board Leadership Meeting, and then the LSR Seven Resource Fair. It was a great opportunity to see how the districts connect families to so many community resources. And then I also attended Burgers, Beakers, and Bots. Team Titanium from Lee Summit West did a great job encouraging kids and adults to have fun with science and shared about their experience with robotics.
All right, thank you. So I was able to attend the Veterans Day, an active military event at Underwood Elementary. An outstanding presentation by that school. Also, the MSBA Conference, that was wonderful. Lee Summit Cares Educational Foundation, not Educational Foundation, Lee Summit Cares is hiring a new Executive Director, and so I was able to be part of the hiring team for that, and so we have narrowed down to three candidates, and hopefully that we will be able to roll out who our new ED next month. And so that is pretty exciting for Lee Summit Cares and what they do for our community and for our students. Also, Board Leadership Meeting with Vice President Foley, Lee Summit North Football Game. We know that it's the talk of the town, but we know that that is a strong team, and they did a wonderful job, and they had a great season. Also, a Belcher Scholarship, which we got to see and meet Mr. Lyons, and so that was wonderful. For those, it was pretty ironic that all of us picked Mr. Lyons as our number-one choice, and so that was a really easy and short meeting for us of going through scholarships. Also, the CAC Meeting, which was wonderful, the Hilltop Tour. For those that do not know what that partnership looks like, but basically, Lee Summit School District, we provide the academic services for Hilltop. That property is owned by Jackson County, and there is some opportunity of, there's some opportunities there. And we are going to advocate with our partners in Jackson County to try to meet some needs there. And then we also, Dr. Carlson joined me on our day tour, and there are some things that Lee Summit could possibly do to be able to enhance the services that we're providing to those students. But that was not only a moving opportunity for me, but it was also a life-changing opportunity. These are students that are within the court systems, and so that, every dynamic is different for every student. But when it's all said and done, education, no matter what life, your, what life path you're on, you deserve to be able to have a great education. And so, a very great opportunity to be out there. And Mr. Montgomery is, he's, he's a mastermind for that facility. And then also, I was able to tour the robotics at Lee Summit North on today. One of the things that all of the robotics teams are saying is, they are happy that they have their own buildings. And so that is to our financial stewardship with our bond money, to be able to provide that for our buildings and meeting the needs of our students with geometry also. And then, last but not least, as you can see, we are a busy Board. We are rolling out our next community conversations with dinner. So for those that did not know that we serve in dinner, we are serving dinner, and we're looking forward to seeing everyone on December the 11th.
Thank you, everybody. Yes?
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
Okay, because it's not about me, actually. I just wanna brag on Hazel Grove Elementary. There's a student there who is a kindergartner, who has some medical conditions, and the kindergarten class, classes, those teachers decided to work with a couple of parents at Hazel Grove and put on an absolutely enormous fundraiser for this student and this family to help defer some of their medical costs. And though it did not happen during the school day, I just, I have to bring attention to it, because the teachers were really instrumental in supporting this, and it's just a testament to how much those teachers, one of whom had both of my kids, just love their kids and go to the ends of the earth with their personal time and their effort and their, all their love and care for the kids, and it was just amazing. And I'm just gonna name them, because I asked them if it was okay if I bragged on them. It's Michelle Lyle at Hazel Grove and Susan Dunham, both kindergarten teachers, and then two parents, Jessica Crocker and Carly Qualls. They did just amazing. They had classic cars that came through and did like a whole parade. They had huge auction items, bounce houses, all just donated, and it happened in my neighborhood, which was amazing. And they raised twenty-five thousand dollars for this family. So it was huge. So, I don't know how I could forget that, so I'm sorry, but thank you for letting me just give them a shout-out if any of them happen to be listening now or in the future. Just amazing work. So, thanks to them.
Absolutely, and I think that's important, because all of that was done for one student. And that just shows the impact that we are as a community on supporting one another. And then also, I think since we were giving shout-outs to our staff that was participating as being an instructor during MSBA, Mr. Holder was also one of our leaders during the MSBA Conference. And what that simply means is that people are looking to, Board Member Miller's point, they're looking to our staff to, to share the things that we're doing as a district. So, don't let anyone tell you that Lee Summit R Seven is not the best school district in this region, because we are.
I like that. All right, next agenda item is 5.01, Approval of Transfer of Funds.
Give me the, give me the motion.
No, I got it. I move to approve the transfer of four million, six hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifteen cents from the General Fund to the Special Revenue Fund.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, none opposed.
Next item is 5.02, Approved Treasurers' Report and Payment of the Bills.
I move to approve the Treasurer's Report and Payment of the Bills.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed.
Next item is Consent Agenda, and that's Item 6.01 to 6.11.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda Items as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed.
Next item for decision is 7.01, Revision to Board Policy JFBB. That's our new policy we passed last month on student advisors to Board of Education.
Okay, so we're basically gonna be bringing this policy back to the Board of Education. As you can see, there is a highlighted line, which is number seven. I know that there was some conversation around this particular line about visiting the high school feeder schools. Was this line supposed to be removed, or was the language supposed to be changed?
The language was supposed to be changed to, and as, as, as necessary, or I think we said as, if possible. If possible was the language that we wanted to include.
Okay.
So that it wouldn't be a transportation barrier. If possible, they will visit feeder schools.
Okay, so we want to leave number seven. We just want to make sure that as possible or at the convenience of the student.
Correct, correct. Yes, that was the intention.
Okay, and the reason why, we're also, just for the Board's information, we're making this correction, because there's a lot of media that's about to go out with it, and we just wanna make sure what's going into the kid's hand is an accurate policy.
Yeah.
The also, you will see if you go into the selection of student representatives, there were some date changes. On December fifteenth is being our deadline for the application. January the eleventh is being the committee's deadline of getting interviews done. And then January the eighteenth, we're gonna bring those students in. They will be introduced to the full Board, and we will basically say that these are student representatives. And then, number one, at the bottom, basically, the application is electronic application, so therefore it's no need to go to the principal, all that type of stuff, so it'll go directly to the Board's Secretary, if no one has objection to that. The other thing that I'll just bring up, the last piece, is for consistency's sake, the policy basically has representative, and then it has advisor. Which one do we wanna pick? And let's just use that one word all the way through the entire policy. How did that sound?
It was, it was interesting, right, the way that that fluctuated between the two. I think when we were talking about it all along, I think representative was where, is what we were using much more often.
Okay.
And that's what I've seen quite often throughout other policies.
Okay, does anyone object to representative? If we wanna go with representative or advisor? Okay, so representative it is, and so we can just get that changed to where representative is throughout the entire policy. Okay, if there's no other changes, if we can just go and get a motion to accept, to accept the policy as with those adjustments?
So, I would move to approve the revisions as a first and final reading to Board Policy JFBB as now has been presented.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, none opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
Our next item of decision is 7.02, and this is the purchase of a Great Crossley Ford Mobility Lift Van.
Okay, so we're gonna hear from Dr. Shelton, but basically, we know that when they came back to us last Board, it was supposed to have been approval for a hundred and ten, it came back at a hundred and eighteen, so I'm sure that Dr. Carlson has come and asked for eight thousand dollars. Dr. Shelton?
Yes, yes, so.
What did I say?
Luckily, luckily, we've, with Krista Metaglia and her team do a wonderful job negotiating, so we actually been able to negotiate that price down to just under a hundred and ten thousand dollars. If you, and you do recall that this discussion began a handful of months ago, we were talking about great beginnings in early childhood education, transportation. We evaluated our, our best solutions to address that issue. We came up with the best solution being purchasing a lift van. We went through the process of finding vendors that could provide that to us, put out the RFP. Had one of the vendors bring one of, this particular van onsite. It was, I'll say, it was actually test-driven by one of our best drivers and an aide, but also the rest of our staff, you know, kinda went through it, looked through it, and looked at the features. And we're very excited about bringing this opportunity to you, put it, put it out for RFP. We had two responders to the, the RFP, and we believe this is to be the best, best opportunity for our students.
Okay, are there any questions on the Board? Board Member Murdock?
I don't have, I don't have too many questions. One, I'm the one who asked to move this here only because I think it's an important note that we're trying to continue along with our staff with our own resources to provide for the students within our district. I think, one, I wanted to make sure that we were able to articulate that, that that was part of the Board's desire, even when we were adopting the transportation issues recently. Dr. Shelton, I know you answered a couple of questions for me here, and I do appreciate that in terms of needs and use and stuff like that. My last question on this item is just essentially going to be, if we see a need and we can continue, and I would anticipate we'll use this a lot, right, I really do. Is there a way to market slash make sure that schools throughout the district know that, A, it's available so that maybe students who have these particular needs could participate in activities that they might normally not be afforded the opportunity to participate in? And B, if we figure that out and we can't, and we don't have enough transportation to be able to do that, is that where then you were articulating we would look again at possibly getting a second one if necessary?
Exactly. To your first point, communication out, Dr. Mathis, I believe is here, at least was here earlier, yes, as well as Kirk Hippel. Those, those would be the two areas where we would see the most immediate need, immediate use through our special services program, through activities. And now that we have secured this, we will use those two, those two areas to really push this hard, as well as just overall providing information to our building principals and other administrators that this is an opportunity to help support our students. This agreement with Gary Crossley is an agreement that's good for a year of this pricing. And, and I'll say and, and as long as they have the 2023 models. They had, at, at last conversation with Gary Crossley, they had, I believe, thirteen of these available to them. So, if we see the need, when we see the need, within the next twelve months, we have this pricing available to us, and as long as that, that van is available, and of course, obviously with Board approval and the need and data to back it up, we would come with that recommendation.
Perfect, and that answered my other question of how long is the agreement good for with Gary Crossley? And as you know, I'm one hundred percent supportive of this. I just wanted to make sure that we were able to articulate that. Thanks.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Yes. Except now my thing just went, I'll let somebody else do it.
I move that the Board of Education award the purchase of one mobility van to Gary Crossley Ford in the amount of one hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, none opposed, motion passes. Thanks, Dr. Shelton.
Our next agenda item is 8.01, Item for Discussion, Facility Use for Caucus. And Board President Sparks, if you wish, I could give context.
Yes, you can go and give context. I will say that this did come to Board Leadership before it's coming to the full Board.
So, as, as you may know, there's a presidential election next year, and Missouri this year is gonna use the caucus method. It is not part of the official election calendar within state, because each party does their own. We have been approached by one of the two parties, both parties, my understanding, are gonna do their caucuses in March in Jackson County, so it starts at the county level and builds to a state level. And so one of those two parties has done that once before in our district in 2012. At the Lee Summit High School Gymnasium, they asked if any of our facilities gym-wise were open. We checked, we only have one of our We checked, we only have one of our seven middle school, high school gyms that's not already being used that day, because it is a busy time of the year for us, and that's East Trails Middle School. I, I've checked board policy K I to make sure it does not violate campaigning, and it does not. I even went through legal to make sure that was the case. Assumed it wouldn't, but we kinda checked that out, it is not campaigning, there won't be candidates here campaigning. Then, we look through board policy K G, and that's the facility usage. And we do think it fits, although they're not a quite a perfect fit with any of the three groups, but we're gonna treat it like a nonprofit. So, if I get your blessing, my intention is to say yes and offer it. They have to fill out the paperwork and pay the small nominal fee that it's in there. But, offer it saying yes, we would allow that, and we do that for either party, if either party asked, and the facility was available. So, just wanted to throw that out there, since it is a, probably a higher profile thing, wanted to give you a chance to give me feedback, but my intention is to say yes if the paperwork is submitted and everything is done correctly.
Just have just one, is there any other questions before I have a clarifying question? So, when we said that we had one high school that was available, that we could basically accommodate, well, one middle school?
One middle school, they were hoping to get a high school, because they think they're gonna get a bigger crowd. So, in two thousand twelve, they had Lee Summit High School, and they capped at a thousand, is what the facility would hold, and they turned out away people, because there was more than a thousand showed up. But, all of our high schools and three of our middle schools are being utilized that day.
Is both parties caucus required to happen on that particular day?
No, they pick their own day as a party, and so one party has picked the first Saturday of March. I believe the other party has picked either the last or second last Saturday of March.
Okay, is there any other questions? Mr. Murdoch?
I just have one, what's the, what's our, how would we treat overflow in the, in the parking lot, who's responsible for?
They would be responsible for all that, so, we would set up chairs on the floor as well as the bleachers. So, we, we've given them a number of what we think we could fit in East Trails, but they would handle their part, on that part.
Sounds good, perfect, thanks.
I just have one last follow-up question, is all activity on the inside of our buildings, or is there anything that we would see on the outside of any of our?
The only thing you might see on the outside is, is directions of what door to enter, where to park. Especially for handicap, if there's handicap individuals, people who needing specialized parking, because they may extend it beyond what we already have, they could mark that, but that's the only thing you would see.
Okay. Alright, if there's no other questions, and this was an item for discussion. So, basically, if there's no objection, then Dr. Buck will basically, will give the information to them, letting them know that they can use our facilities, here's our policies, and here's the guardrails. Alright, that's the direction, Dr. Buck.
Thank you, Board of Education, our next item is, is items of information presentations. Nine point oh one, elementary gifted and advanced studies annual evaluation report, and I believe we both have two people, Dr. Jones and Dr. Herzog listed, and it looks like Dr. Jones is the one coming up.
Just for the heck of it, let's give him a hand as he comes.
Alright, good evening, everybody, so a quick review just of our gifted program here in Lee Summit. Starting things off with, we kinda have three components within our gifted program itself, starting with AIM, which is for first through third grade. Students are pulled out into a gifted classroom setting, and they meet with them once a week for two and a half hours. We have Aspire, which is for fourth and fifth grade students, exactly like AIM, but the biggest difference is, is that they meet twice the amount of time, they meet twice a week for a total of about five hours. And then we have Achieve, which is for our students sixth through and now this year, eighth grade. And those services are provided within the specific social studies course content that they have for their grade. So, strategic alignment into board goals, essentially through, as we continue to refine our process of an equitable and timely identification process, and focused on developing engaging units rooted in real-world experiences and opportunities, we're able to promote academic growth and provide an environment where all students feel as if they have a sense of belonging. The biggest financial implication of the gifted program comes in the staffing that we require. At the elementary levels, we have nine teachers to serve eighteen schools and one, one or two students at the, on the virtual side of things. And then, in the middle school, we now have four teachers, one in each of the middle school settings, to, to serve all grades there, K through eight, or sixth through eight. Evaluating our stakeholder and planning kind of input process. When it comes to testing piece, the screening identification process, the bulk of it is rooted in the universal screening we do for all first and third grade students. Then, that's done in the spring. We use, it's a naglary general ability test, it's a test that has three separate components in it. The first is a non-verbal component. If students are, all, all first and third grade students are giving that non-verbal component, and then those students who are in the ninety-fifth percentile or above for their scores, continue on for a quantitative and verbal portion of the test. And then we use that information in conjunction with other data points of academic, as well as screener data, or, not screener data, rating scales in regards to traits of a gifted learner to identify the criteria that we have for state, to identify gifted students. In addition to our universal screening process that we have, we also have advocacy and referrals, as well as kind of a, an additional safety net to ensure that we are doing all that we can to identify students, especially those who may not made the traditional steps and processes that we would go through in identifying kids. So, advocacy is an opportunity that if a student goes through a process and, and a decision is made not to continue on, students can be referred to advocacy where we come together as a team, look at the information and academic they have, and determine, is there something about the profile of the student that was missed in our current process? Were there things that maybe influenced how they performed, and should we consider continuing testing anyway, or other avenues of identifying the traits that they might have to be, to be identified as gifted? The referral process itself is more about sometimes not staying stuck rigid to only the first and third grade referral window, or our screening window that we have, and wanting to have an opportunity for students who maybe missed that window or didn't get part to do it being new, and not having to wait a significant amount of time to be, having an opportunity to be identified in that process. I already kinda talked about the structure of what elementary looks like for each group of students. Here, though, I wanna take a second to kinda focus on some examples of the units of study that we have at the elementary level. Some classes, they have, the units are focused on the structure of amazing race and exploring countries that are surrounded by the ring of fire, and how that geographical component impacts histor- historical impact on their culture and the geography around it. There's National Treasure where students are learning about different states and national parks of the U.S. And my favorite right now is the participation in the Battle of the Brains competition with Burns and McDonald, where our fifth grade students are getting to essentially do anything and everything that has to come up with them developing proposal for the next new exhibit at Science City. As I mentioned again, the middle school students, their content is aligned to the actual social studies curriculum standards that they have for each grade level. Here, I wanna kinda spend a second to talk about seventh grade though itself with ancient world history. They are doing an ancient world histi simulation where they have, they go as far back, looking at civilizations as far back as four thousand B.C. And they, they explore these civilizations through a competition where they're their own group, and they have these tasks and challenges and dilemmas, military decisions to make with the other civilization groups within their class. And through those, they get points and gain, essentially gain people and population as their civilizations grow. And essentially, in the end, this is this, it's a team competition where, in the end, one civilization grows large enough to become an empire. Looking at our annual program goals, basically, kind of what I've talked about before, we're utilizing our mission, vision, and values to ensure our screening and identification process is as effective as possible without bias, and that our instruction supports and is aligned to expanding our needs to the students all the way up into eighth grade. And so, how we're measuring this, one is looking at the total population of students we have that we're able to serve as a district. As you can see here in comparison from last year to this year, we've seen a significant increase in program enrollment. That's mostly due to adding eighth grade to our services, so now we can include those students in that totals. So, we, by doing that, we're serving, we're serving thirty percent more students we are this year compared to last year. If I were to take the total number of students that are in eighth grade, so it's kind of apples to apples to last year, we've still seen a fifteen percent increase in the number of students we are serving, which means that, hey, the steps that we're taking with some of the modifications we've made over the last two years with our identification process, we're doing a better job of finding kids outside of just the traditional model that we've done in the past. I apologize, I, I missed putting the subgroup data in here, but it is in the written report. But, one thing of note that I wanted to point out was, if you were to look at that report from, in comparison from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two, and then last year, every single, almost every subgroup saw a pretty significant increase in their total percent representation of our population identified. If you were to look at that comparison this year to last year, most subgroups have actually pretty much maintained, there's been some slight up and down, but it's pretty consistent when compared to last year. Although, we would still like to see some underrepresented subgroups continue to increase. I do feel like it's a positive note that when we've increased the number of students we are serving so much, and yet it hasn't negatively impacted our representation at this point, that we're still doing a good job of catching kids and really looking at the, at the populations of students that we maybe missed in the past. Just this is another, a different breakdown of the total population served here as a district in comparisons. That middle column, it might be a little bit confusing, but that middle column is essentially the percentage of students who we serve compared to all students in the district, the total population. And then the third column is when we only look at grades essentially first through eight, because those are the grades we serve as a district. And then, kind of continuing to talk about the impact that the program is making and our strengths and celebrations. There's multiple quotes in the written report from some of our students, but just like to point out a few. Isabella, who's an eighth grader, said that the gifted program has given me three things that I value more than anything else. The experience of learning what I love, a delightful challenge each, every day, and a makeshift family to share it with. Which, if that doesn't encompass our sense of belonging and goals, you know, what, what more could we ever ask for? And then on this one, just another one that jumped out at me was Wesley in sixth grade. My favorite thing about AIM, Aspire, and Achieve is the inclusiveness, finding your people. So, to me, more than anything else, and I can feel comfortable in speaking to the teachers, that that's probably our number one priority is, are we, are our students being able to do a great job of understanding who they are themselves, and who the people are around them, and how, how, and building that sense of togetherness and belonging really valuable, and we hear that kind of feedback from our students. So, just looking at upcoming evaluation questions that we have, continuing to refine our screening process to ensure progress towards our program goals that we have. And how can we intentionally plan opportunities for students to identify their own personal strengths and increase self-awareness, not only the strengths of being someone who's gifted, but also being a little bit more understanding about the shadow sides and the difficulties that can come, especially socially, emotionally with being, with being gifted. And so, we're kind of attacking these questions in a few different ways. We have, I meet with the elementary team and the department meeting about once a month, where we review the screening identification process, and one, making sure we have collective clarity and understanding of what we're looking for, what are the steps, how are we moving forward? But also, taking time to try to poke holes and see, are there areas that we're still missing? Are there things about the criteria we have, or the steps that we have, that might be limiting or preventing students from being noticed, and what we can do about that? Continuing to reevaluate and implement how things are going at for eighth grade in the program. Middle school teachers, when it comes to the instructional piece, I feel like have, might have the most difficult job, because they still have the same standards and expectations that every other social study class has. But then they get, they get the privilege of having the challenge of then, how can I make modifications to meet the students' needs? And, and hit both of those areas to serve them best. This is, of this action, this is one is actually the most difficult goal that we spent a lot of time talking about with the elementary team, is streamlining the screening process to prevent, to preserve instructional time. The significant majority of the screening is done by our gifted teachers. And so, as we do a better job of identifying more students, that requires more testing, which requires more time away from instruction, it just is what it is, and so that's something we're continuing to monitor and look at and seeing, are there things that we can do? Are there ways that we can look at this to ensure that it doesn't become a significant impact to the instructional time we have with our students? And then finally, spending a lot of time talking about the actual unit and lesson plans and experiences that our students are having in the classroom itself. Actually, next week, on Monday and Tuesday, the gifted elementary team is collaborating together on second semester planning in units. And a big part of that is we're having some of the district LMS staff come in and collaborate on, one, how we can, how we can help support students with meaningful research, but also knowing like, hey, how can we tap in and rely on the, on the resources that our libraries have? And expand our units, and even some opportunities for co-teaching, but to ensure that we're providing a quality experience for our gifted students when it comes to instruction-wise. And then, we're having a year-long, the professional learning pathways that we're doing as a district, the gifted team is specifically committed to collaborating both on, how do we identify the social and emotional needs of our students in the gifted program? How are we servicing those? How can we integrate experiences where they have planning, where they have intention, where we have failure and be able to normalize that failure, and how to work and navigate through that? And then on top of that, I think that's, really, that's... Yeah, I think that was it. Oh, no, I knew I was missing something, and how also we can support classroom teachers and that. So, it's not only what are we doing within our gifted classrooms, but we're pulling together resources and materials we have that then we're sharing with gen ed classrooms, so then they have this full wraparound kind of support inside and outside of the gifted program. Alright, hand things off to Dr. Herzog.
Well, good evening, I wanna make a note that Mr. Jones, Dr. Jones got an applause as he walked up here. An applause for weighted coursework, okay. So, talking a bit about weighted coursework, advanced studies all the way from sixth grade through twelfth grade. Coursework designed to provide additional rigor for our students, acceleration in some ways. Students taking coursework prior to the time other students might take it in eighth grade. One big celebration on this first slide is that we offer a hundred and seventy-nine different weighted courses in our district beginning in grade six. That is incredible, those are opportunities for our students to engage in coursework that is going to allow them an additional GPA weight, but also additional rigor as they're in those courses. This is a very brief synopsis of what these courses look like. In the written report, you have a much more detailed count of all of our weighted courses offered from sixth through twelfth. Really of note here is how narrow this begins in sixth grade, acceleration in mathematics only. Seventh grade, that, that expands to advanced studies in our core classes. Eighth grade expands again with advanced studies in core classes with the additional high school languages being offered as well. Also, Algebra one is offered for students in, in eighth grade. Ninth and tenth grade, advanced studies in all of our core classes, again, expansion there to a limited number of core classes. Eleventh grade is when the weighted coursework opportunities truly do expand significantly. Not just in our, our secondary, our high schools, sorry, but also in Summit Technology Academy, and also the offerings that we offer off-campus through the MIC program, and then also at Longview Community College. So, significant opportunities at the eleventh and twelfth grade. Talk a little bit about how we help educate our students and parents about the offerings that, that we, we have for them in the advanced studies. You'll notice that first bullet, a lot of emphasis in sixth grade and ninth grade. Those are the, the transition points when they move into middle school and into high school. Those are crucial times for us to help educate our students and parents on the opportunities available to them. I can speak from experience at the ninth grade level, offering eighth grade parent nights for, for them to come in and learn about advanced studies. I have actually led those conversations at Usle Summit West, and other the other principals did too at the other schools. Really helping to educate our parents on opportunities that are available to them for their students, but not just opportunities, but, but being realistic. That was a big conversation we had with eighth grade parents is, what do you hope, where do you wanna stretch? Where do your, where does your student wanna stretch themselves, which subject? If it's all subjects, great, that's fantastic, but it doesn't have to be all subjects. Where is that sweet spot for them, because it differs from, from student to student? We also place an additional emphasis, from tenth to eleventh grade, as I mentioned, the offerings expand significantly. And that is truly the point, well, there's a lot of decisions to be made when you get to high school, but when you get to the eleventh grade year, there are a lot more decisions to be made about what you're going to do. Are you gonna stay on campus, are you gonna go off? Are you going to stay on campus? Are you going to go off campus? What are you going to take? How's that going to fit in with your band, your orchestra? There are a lot of options for our students and those options create a lot of stress about what they're going to take. So we put a lot of weight there too at that time. Here's some data on our enrollment. So at the middle school level, you'll notice we've got 4,056 students enrolled in our middle schools. 2,374 of those students are in advanced studies coursework. So almost 60% of our students are taking advanced level coursework in, in the, the middle school age range. That's a fantastic number, I believe. Certainly room to grow there, but a great number. And then we have some data below that. That top row is really the demographic or subgroup breakdown of our, of our, all of our middle schools for our totals. And then the bottom row is the weighted breakdown. So you can see we have a lot of similarities, male, female, our demographic subgroups. There is, there are some, there are some areas there. We have opportunities though, and you can probably see those. Where, for instance, free and reduced lunch makes up 20% of our total population in middle school. And 11%, almost 12% of those students make up the weighted coursework. There's, there's a gap there in that enrollment. High school, not surprising, but also a celebration point. That number, percent grows to 70% of students who are engaged in weighted coursework at the high school level. Again, a fantastic stat, I believe. And you can see also, we have some gaps as well in our enrollment data there below. But a lot of celebrations there in terms of how close some of those percentages are. And over time, how some of those, those gaps have closed as well in our enrollments. I did choose to highlight one area of our advanced program that really did focus in on a little bit of information for you all. And then also some, some achievement, some enrollment and achievement data with our IB program. So our international baccalaureate program exists in all three of our high schools at the 11th and 12th grade year. You can see the first bullet there is about the diploma program. That is the absolute most rigorous course of study that we have in LSR seven. You'll notice in some enrollment data later, how few students take, actually engage in that program from the total. But those students that do, we hear time and again, if they do this program, when they go to college, they are well prepared. They are more prepared. The college classes are easier for them than most of the IB classes they took when they were in high school. What that looks like is as a 11th and 12th grade student, six IB courses. That is a, that is a really, really difficult load of classes to take as a junior and a senior. They also take a theory of knowledge course, which is a zero hour course, which they love getting up early and coming in at 6:30 in the morning. Three times a week and taking a zero hour course. It is an amazing course, but they have to get up early to do it. The extended essay is about a 4,000 word essay that they complete prior to the end of their senior year. And then they also do a service project associated with that also. The IB career related program is a much newer program. It is, it really does connect career related coursework through like STA is an example of what you can do with our IB program where students can leave with a career related certificate by completing two IB courses. That seems a different zero hour course, but also an early morning course for them. They have to study a second language and then be engaged in a program off campus such as like, like STA as well. There's some data to show how that program has grown and it is a truly a celebration as well. Here's some participation data for IB over the last three years. I think I would just note there is, I mean, we have had a drop in our diploma candidates, but at the same time, our diploma candidates have dropped. On row one, you'll see that that career related candidates row has increased. There is some relationship there. I wouldn't say it's completely, they're moving from one to another, but there's a relationship there. And a celebration there that those students are engaging in that program at a higher rate. And then also you'll see at the bottom two rows, those are students who are not IB diploma candidates or career related program candidates. Those are just students taking one or more IB courses. As you'll see, this past year, we had 470 students take an IB course through all of our high schools totaling 902 exams. So most of them are taking more than one exam when they, when they take more than one class when they're enrolled in these programs. A little bit of achievement data, and this is some relevant data that I can bring you some context to. So on the IB exam, you can score from a one to a seven. Okay? I've given you the data for the fours, the fives, sixes and sevens. And there's a purpose for that data. So typically colleges award credit if you earn a four through a seven on the IB exam. And so you'll note that 2021, 82%, 2122, 74%. And we had a decline this past year down to 60%. There is, there is some COVID related items here to, to make you aware of. So after 1920, the IB became more lenient in their scoring for those two years. So 2021, 2122, the scoring, actually the, the expectation lowered a little bit. 2223, they resumed pre-COVID expectations. We had a drop there and that is an, obviously an opportunity for us for that. Pre-COVID, our percentages for four through seven were typically in the, I'd say 70, 70 to 80% range like they were in 2021 and 2122. I talked about many of these celebrations as I kind of worked through the presentation, but, but I do think there are things to celebrate with advanced studies. This coursework is fantastic for our students and we have almost 60% of our middle school students engaged, increasing to 70% at the high school level. The 500 students that sit for IB exams almost is a huge celebration. The advanced offerings as they increase throughout school are incredible. And I do think also the IB CP numbers going up, where our students are engaging in IB coursework and career related coursework is tremendous. We do have some opportunities. Our opportunities, I talked about some of the gaps we have to close or should be working to close. Our IB exam standards, I think there's some work to do there. Continued ways to involve and educate parents. We always need to be doing more with that, helping parents know what is available to their students and when. And then we are working through some curriculum revision and alignment for six through 12 advanced coursework. Aligning that coursework together and also connecting that, that alignment with what we're doing in our on-grade level courses is also very, very important. So opportunities for us in the future. So I think at this point, Dr. Jones and I would take any questions that the board would have for either one of us.
All right, Vice President Foley.
Thank you. And thank you both for your presentations. I just wanted to ask about transportation. Is that provided for the zero hour theory of knowledge course? Or is that potentially a barrier for participation?
It is not provided. We have not heard from students or parents that has prevented them during their junior or senior year. Many of our students drive at that point, but our students who don't, we have not heard that that has prevented them from being part of the program. But it could be considered a barrier because we don't provide transportation that early.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think mine is just an ask. If we can provide the disaggregated data for slides 24 and 25 like we did on page 21?
Slides 24 and 25, correct?
Correct. If we can disaggregate.
I wrote it down for you, Dr. Herzog.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you for those presentations. Appreciate it.
Next items are items for information, written reports, 10.01 to 10.05.
All right. Is there any comments or questions on any other written reports? Okay. Thank you. And my computer is dead, so.
You bet. We only have one more agenda item. It's 11.01, public comments, and I don't believe anyone signed up.
Okay. No public comments, so this meeting is over. Thank you all.